Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom Jones is here with the City Rescue Mission. Tom, if you'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pettis if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, this day is the day that you have made. It is the most important day of our lives because today is the day that decisions will be made that will affect so many people that are important to us, Lord. So guide our thoughts, guide our words, guide our decisions today, God, that all that is done is done to your glory in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before Tom leaves... Too late. Just going to point out that City Rescue Mission is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful organization. And if you have concerns about how we handle our homeless situation, we have room for improvement as all cities do. But what they do down there along with Homeless Alliance is very, very impressive.
Jim, I was going to point out also that City Rescue Mission is one of the honorees that will be recognized by the Center for Nonprofits for their ONE Awards, which recognizes excellence in both service provision and management and leadership. Great organization.
Tom Jones told me last night they had 671. They were able to bring in a lot of the population that typically might not seek a shelter, but because of the cold temperatures, they're able to bring in some others to allow them to have a warm night and obviously encourage them to return as opposed to sleeping elsewhere. But as the city manager mentioned, the City Rescue Mission is a great way to give your giving dollars, and we encourage that at any turn. Switching gears, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us honor each month one employee for the City of Oklahoma City as our Employee of the Month. And Beth Krauts is our recipient. Beth, come on up. We have a resolution. Let's the clerk read it.
Whereas Beth Krauts has been a city employee for eight years and nine months and is the Action Center Supervisor in the Public Information and Marketing Department. And whereas Beth Krauts and her three-member staff handle more than 83,000 citizen contacts each year and have maintained a rating of 95% or above for responding to citizen requests in less than 10 days. And whereas Beth Krauts has worked to improve the office's efficiency by updating the online request form and office procedures, she's also developed and improved relationships with other city departments, elected officials, neighborhood associations, and citizens. Her commitment has created a team effort between the Action Center and the city departments to resolve citizen issues. And whereas Beth Krauts frequently does media interviews in response to open records requests, she has appeared on the mayor's magazine several times to talk about the office and the services it provides citizens. And whereas Beth Krauts attends neighborhood association meetings to provide information about code violations and the reporting process, she also speaks to new city employees about the Action Center. And whereas Beth Krauts makes quarterly presentations to new Habitat for Humanity homeowners and works with the Neighborhood Alliance to host an annual code enforcement workshop, which is one of their most popular workshops. And whereas Beth Krauts, in addition to handling the day-to-day operations, this year led the successful citywide implementation of the Excella Action Center software application for citizen requests and the OKC.gov mobile app. And whereas Beth Krauts is a graduate of the city's municipal leadership program and she co-chares one of the United Ways Community Investment Subcommittee that evaluates and makes funding recommendations for nonprofit agencies. And whereas this council desires to recognize Beth Krauts for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do by here thank and commend Beth Krauts as February 2015 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
You have quite a fan club here today. This is very, it almost looks like a wedding where everyone showed up to stay on one side of the pews. We do need a resolution and a motion. And we'll have to vote on this. Cast your votes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Well, first of all, I really would like to thank Marcia Ingersoll, my manager, and Kristy, my director, all the support that I get from them. Needless to say, I couldn't do this job without that. I have a terrific staff down in the Action Center. It's a team effort down there. Tiffany, Mary, and Ebony and I, I just couldn't do it without them as well. I do want to give a shout out to all the city departments, the directors, all of their staff. As everybody knows, the Action Center is a focal point for our citizenry, but we couldn't do what we do. Every time we reach out to all the city departments, they're there to help us respond to the public. And so it's certainly a team effort. And I want to recognize so many people in this job that I have gotten to know and love out in the community, all our neighborhoods. Georgie Rasko and her staff from Neighborhood Alliance. Bruce Hall, Miller Neighborhood. Patty Cook, Windsor Forest. I could go on and on and on, and I know I've left lots of people out. But I just, I cannot tell you what an honor it is and a pleasure to work and be part of the city. It really, really is a wonderful, wonderful place to work. And last but not least, just a shout out to my mom and dad. Even though they have gone before me, they raised us to know what service was all about. And because of their guidance and their acts, my brother and sister and I, we have been blessed because of it. So, thank you very much. Thank you, council. I appreciate all the work that you allowed me to do with you out in the community, and you've been very supportive of the Action Center and the staff as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Beth. For George. And the Action Center staff leaves the room. All right, we're on item 3B of the council agenda. It's a couple of appointments. I'll look for a motion. Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for January 27th, and four B is to approve the journal for January 20th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item five is requests for revocable permits, and we have three with us today. Has people, have people signed up here? I think maybe we have some people that have signed up to speak. Let's see, let's start with, this one's the first one listed. OKC Metro Alliance, Inc. is requesting to hold the Strides of March Half Marathon and Dogwood-5K on March 8th. And it looks like Tabitha Guest is here? Yeah, come on forward, Tabitha.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Tabitha Guest, 1317 Cone Flower Road, Edmond, Oklahoma, 73013.
Tell us about your event you're hoping to hold.
Okay, well, it's going to be our fourth annual Strides of March Half Marathon and Dogwood-5K. And we hold that out at Lake Stanley Draper, and like I said, it's our fourth year going on. This is a fundraiser, one of two major fundraisers for OKC Metro Alliance. And OKC Metro Alliance, I'm sure that many of you are familiar with us. We've been around for 40-plus years. We support Oklahomans that are interested in recovering from substance abuse. And the race, both of the races, the proceeds from those races go toward the operational cost of running the first-step programs for men and women.
That sounds great. Pete, you okay with this one? All right, we have a motion and a second. Great event out at Lake Stanley Draper on March 8th. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And item 5A2 is a request from McNelly's Plaza Courts LLC to host the St. Patrick's Day Block Party. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? This is it. Brian, yeah? Come on up. We'll need your name and address, Brian.
Brian Pittman, 2740 Northwest, 21st.
All right, and tell us about your event.
This is going to be our seventh annual, actually, St. Patrick's Day Block Party, located right in the middle of Midtown, right outside of our restaurant, McNelly's Pub. It's come a long ways from when it first started in Midtown area. It's a booming project area and stuff there. It's a great place to come to, and we always appreciate the support you guys give us each year for our annual event stuff. And we just request to have the same event just coming on through it for, and hope everybody can come out and see us also.
What are the hours going to be?
It's going to be from 11:00 all the way till midnight on that Tuesday, the 17th, actually, St. Patrick's Day.
And it's in Ward 6, Mick?
And so that little stretch of Walker will be closed.
Exactly, same stretch there and stuff.
People just have to loop around.
Yes.
Not too complicated.
It was so easy back in the day, but now there are more stuffs coming in now and stuff, so it's great.
Well, it's a wonderful event. Thanks so much.
Oh, thank you.
I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, everybody, so much.
Good luck, Brian. All right, and the third request is from the University of Oklahoma's Community Health Alliance to hold the OUCHA Health Dash on March 28th. And Cameron, are you here? Come on forward.
Cameron Goffield. It's 101 Northeast 53rd Street, number 2307, Oklahoma City.
All right, tell us about your event on March 28th.
This will be our sixth year. It's a 5K, 10K run that takes place, and all the proceeds go to a free health clinic in the area that serves the underprivileged. So this will be our sixth year. It takes place right there on the campus and pretty much be the same as it has been in the past.
It says a dash. How far are you all running?
5K, 10K.
That's no dash. Take my word for it. But anyway, good luck, and it's in Ward 7. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously. Thank you for what you're doing. All right, item six is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just won this morning on page 10, under item 9C1D, 9C1D, 519 Southwest 10 Street. West of that be stricken, the owner has now secured.
That's it, huh?
That's it.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll recess the council meeting convening as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items.
Two items, second.
Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convening as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Again, four items.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the PPA?
Mayor, I did just have a question. I see some of our golf friends out here. I wanted to go see the Lincoln, new Lincoln Golf Club the other day, which is absolutely fabulous. It just looks outstanding, both sides, the entry, the view over the course is going to be great. But I couldn't exactly figure out how to get there. You know, when you're driving along MLK, you see the sign that says Lincoln Park, but it's not related in any way to where you get into the golf course. And there is no signage down on 36th Street to understand to get in, and I wondered if it would make any sense to put some signage there on 36th and MLK, maybe, to direct people down and get into the golf park. We really, you know, based on what we're seeing here, we really want people to use it and to be able to find it.
Yeah, that's a great point. And we might need signage from 50th as well. I don't know what's there. Is there signage at 50th, Steve? Okay, that's a couple of good ideas. Thanks.
Now, I have a comment. It's not quite as happy as Mick's, but...
That would be always true, Pat.
That's just true, I know. That's Mr. No, Dr. No, I'll take that. Anyway, I just wanted to make everyone understand, I did do some checking into the pricing, and it will not be uncompetitive with the private enterprises that offer the same kind of services, i.e. the wedding services and things like that in the clubhouse. I was concerned about that, so it will not be, it will be competitive with those people, not uncompetitive.
You're concerned we're going to undercut the private sector, and you're confident now that we won't be doing that.
Yes, you got it right, Jim. You say it better than I do.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the PPA. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
If I could add something, one other thing that the golf, I do want to encourage people as soon as it's open to come out and see the public art that you installed. This is one of the very first MAPS projects that has our 1% for, no, it's not a MAPS project. It's one of our city projects that has a, sorry, a 1% for public art in it, and it's a fantastic piece. I've seen photographs of it. It just looks wonderful, so I want to encourage everybody to go and see it.
Great. Thanks, guys. All right, adjourn the OC PPA convening as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items. Do individual considerations?
All right, what individual considerations do we have today?
Mayor, if there are none, one thing I would like to highlight is that item A is a request for proposal for advertising for body-worn cameras. We had a discussion about that a few weeks ago, and this is the RFP to go solicit that first pilot project.
Terrific. Ready to go? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket, four items.
Those items subject to individual considerations?
All right, are there any individual considerations on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That moves us on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. First is a couple of issues that have to do with, from the planning department. The first is in Ward 7, we'd close several streets and alleys in the Walnut Grove addition. John, you okay with this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 9A2 would close a 15-foot platted utility easement. This is up in Surrey Hills in Ward 1. James, you okay with this?
Yeah, I am. It was unanimous. Planning Commission approval. There were no protests, so yeah, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9A2. It passed unanimously. We're on to 9B. This is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9B? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to 9C. This is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9C? All right, how about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. 9D is also a public hearing. I think Craig Freeman's going to have more on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that authorizes refunding of some of our bonds. And I did want to point out first, before we get into that, that we did receive confirmation of, from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, of our AAA bond rating. And there's several factors that they talk about in their reports. The next item that we have on the agenda is adopting a debt policy, and Kenny Soodle, our Assistant Finance Director and Debt Manager, is going to talk about that and talk a little bit more about the AAA bond rating. But there's several factors that they reference, looking at our bond rating, AAA bond rating for having a strong local economy, for strong voter support, for initiatives that support quality of life and support ongoing improvements within the city. They look at a strong employment base, strong tax base, and they talk about strong financial management. And that strong financial management starts with the council, with your priorities, with the policies that you establish for us, with the decisions that you make, the financial decisions you make, the budgeting decisions you make. And then that goes throughout the city organization with all of the managers, department directors throughout the organization, decisions they're making, the way that we manage our finances. And so it's a strong reflection, not only for us as a city organization, but for the city as a whole, allows us to borrow at lower rates and helps us to be able to do more with our capital funding.
One of the other things they talked about when we met with them, Councilman Greiner and I talked about this this morning, is our moderate debt per capita ratio. That's a key factor that they look at, and we're at the lower end of that, and that's very much a key indicator for the rating agencies.
Right.
Craig, before you go too much further, you or someone else, do you happen to know, say, for example, out of the top 100 municipalities, what percentage or approximate number have a AAA rating?
I know that as far as size on municipalities, I believe it's around 10 to 12 have a AAA rating on cities that are over 500,000 population.
10 to 12 number or percentage?
10 to 12 number. And I'm not sure how many are rated overall.
No, that's fine. It really is a significant achievement to obtain that AAA rating as a municipality, and it just doesn't come very easy, as Craig mentioned, so...
Right. And there are many factors, and Kenny will talk about that, there are many factors that we can't control, you know, within the economy that we can't control that influence our AAA bond rating. So those factors that we can, like the strong financial management decisions we're making, are really important for us to do what we can to...
And one of the things that's always been a negative to us is we have one source of tax revenue, and that's the sales tax. Many cities have either multiple sources, or if they have a single source, it's property tax, which is deemed by the rating analysis as a more reliable revenue source.
Yeah, especially...
Although our sales tax has been actually quite reliable overall over the years, and we've been able to prove that.
Right. If you compare Oklahoma City, say, to the cities south of here, Texas mainly, they do have a variety of revenue sources, and you would think they would have a much easier time to achieve this rating, but that's not necessarily the case because of those other factors that enter into it. So, again, I'm just trying to point out, it takes a lot of work to achieve this rating, and we shouldn't look upon it as something that is easily achieved.
Right.
I think, Craig, I also recall reading somewhere that, you know, you were talking about the per capita debt ratio and being low, that the state's bond issue was actually lower, or the state's rating was lowered because they didn't have enough debt, which spoke to the fact that we might not be taking care of our infrastructure the way we need to.
Right, it's kind of a balance that you're looking for. You don't want to overburden your population, but at the same time, you want to make sure you're making improvements.
Doing the right decisions. So when we're, you know, selling bonds to do street improvements and the kinds of things we need to do, I mean, people really, you do need to take care of your house.
Right.
So, thank you for being so responsible.
And this item that we have on today is a refunding. And a refunding basically is like a refinancing, where you're refinancing to get a lower borrowing cost and generate savings. The estimates right now are that we'll save about $10 million overall, or about a 10% savings. And so it'll allow us to be able to issue additional bonds out of the 2007 bond authorization in the spring to be able to continue to advance projects. Currently, the projection that we have on the true interest cost, the overall true interest cost, because the bonds that we're refunding have about 11 years left on them, and so we, the refunding, the term of the refunding can't go beyond that term, and so it'll be about 11-year bonds, so it's shorter term than what you normally see. But we're expecting it to be below 2% for the overall true interest cost, and so that should be very favorable to us and be able to help us with additionally, you know, advancing additional capital projects.
Craig, what was the life of those original bonds?
20 years. These were GO bonds that were, one set in the 2005, were actually bonds that had been refunded previously, and we have an opportunity to do additional refunding. And the 2006 were the original GO bonds, but those were set on 20 years.
Craig, thanks very much.
And you said whenever we refund them, it doesn't extend the life of them?
That's right. It can't go beyond the life of those bonds or the term that's remaining on the bonds that were originally refunded.
We're not just passing debt.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. 9D is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is the item that Craig was speaking about, and Kenny Soodle is here. This is, would establish a debt management policy for the City of Oklahoma City.
Absolutely. Good morning. I'm Kenny Soodle, Assistant Finance Director and the Debt Manager for the city. And the item this morning is adopting a debt policy, and this is a very exciting thing for me. As Craig mentioned, you know, we just had our AAA ratings confirmed. Several reasons that, I just want to kind of run through a couple of reasons that they mentioned in their reports, both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. They talk about our history of stable financial performance. They talk about our significant employment base. They talk about our fully funded pension. They talk about our strong reserves. But one of the things that's always a source of pride for me personally is they talk about our history of strong financial management practices. And I just want to read, you know, a short quote from Standard &amp; Poor's, was that they believe these practices are strong, well-embedded, and likely sustainable. And so that ties right in with the reason why we would adopt a debt policy. The debt policy really memorializes a lot of practices that are longtime practices by the council and staff, and it just memorializes that, and it provides guidance for future staff. This supports the council priority of maintaining strong financial management. And again, this does help us, actually having a formalized policy will help us have a few extra points in the rating process. So as Craig mentioned, some of those things that we maybe can't control, like the broader economy, this is one of the things we can control, and there's actually a portion in the rating process where you can get some extra points by having a formal policy. Once again, it's just the right thing to do. This is considered a best practice. Many of the major cities have a debt policy, and our policy was modeled after the Government Finance Officers Association Debt Policy Best Practice. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to go through some of the major topics that the debt policy deals with. One of those is the appropriate use of debt. Again, what this talks about is that you shouldn't use debt for operations, it's for capital improvements and economic development projects. It talks about debt limits, and so this is a little bit different depending what types of debt you're talking about. On the GO side, we're setting a debt limit of trying to keep our outstanding general obligation bonds at 3% or less of the full market value of property in Oklahoma City. And the reason this is the metric we've chosen here is, one, this is something that rating agencies look at. 4% is kind of the cutoff level that rating agencies consider to be at least an A-rated type bond, so we obviously want to keep it even better than that. The history is we've been at about 1.5% on that, on our GO bond program, so this still gives us room in the future if council ever decides that they want to up the bond program, but it's still at a very strong and stable level. And property taxes, as you all know, are the revenue source that directly pays these general obligation bonds. One of the other things on debt limits that we want to point out was sometimes the city provides loan guarantees to the debt of different trusts, and examples of this have been some of the bonds that are backed by the city, are the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust bonds, the COPPA parking garage bonds, the golf system bonds. And so our policy recognizes this is not an unlimited resource. There's a, there's a point where if the city backs too much debt, it could be a downward pressure on the city's rating. So basically, what we've done is put a limit in here that we don't want to back more than 10% of the general funds resources when you look at the annual exposure to debt from other trusts. And right now, we're below 4%, so we're nowhere near this limit, but we did want to recognize that in our policy. Also, for revenue bonds of trusts, we've set sort of a target of a coverage ratio of 125. So to explain what that is, you take your operating revenues, subtract your operating expenses, so think of it as what's left over to pay your debt. You take that amount and divide it by your debt, and that's your coverage ratio. So what we've said in our policy is that at a minimum, when we go out for new revenue bonds, they should be at a 125 coverage ratio. So that means you're able to pay your debt and have at least a quarter of your debt payment left over. So it provides a minimal cushion in the event of economic downturns or revenues not coming in like you expected them, et cetera. Now, many of our trusts have coverage ratios that are higher than this. This is just trying to set a target going forward in the future. Some of the other major topics in the debt policy revolve around the structure of debt, so we talk about the term or how long the bond issues are. And the main, you know, besides state law, the main point here is just that we want to try to match our debt to the life of the asset. So in other words, if you're building something that's only going to last for 10 years, we don't want to finance that with debt that's 30 years long, because then 10 years comes and goes, you have to buy or improve that again, whatever that asset is, and you're still paying for the old one. So this is kind of one of those concepts. The other concept would be to try to avoid balloon-type structures, you know, so in other words, when you set up the loan terms, pay it down. pay it down. Don't push all the principal to the end. And there are sometimes reasons financially why you may have to do that, but as a practice, our policy says that we don't want to push that out, because we want to pay the debt down rapidly. It also talks about the different types of debt, and that generally, the city does fixed-rate debt, where you set the interest rate, and that's what it is until the debt matures. But we also can do variable-rate debt. We try to avoid that, but what the policy says is if we decide that that's a good policy, that we need to bring a plan back to you, the governing body, of how we're going to deal with that interest rate risk if rates begin to rise and our payments begin to rise. It also provides the ability to do various types of short-term debt, both in the city and the trusts, where allowed by law. And, again, it says we need to have a plan on how we're going to pay that debt off, how we're going to deal with the various risks associated with those. One of the other major topics is about compliance after we issue debt. And really, there's three main areas. There's more areas than that, but really, the three main areas that we want to focus on, be proactive with. First is IRS tax compliance. Many of our bonds that we issue are tax-exempt bonds, so that means the investors don't pay taxes on the interest payments they receive. And what that means is we end up getting a lower interest rate because of that. And that's a wonderful thing for the city, but it comes with a lot of requirements that we have to maintain for the life of that bond issue. So we want to be proactive about that. Again, we've had practices in place for many years here, but it's stating that in our policy. Another area is, so we're not only regulated by the IRS, we're also regulated by the SEC, the Security and Exchange Commission. And that has to do with our annual disclosure. When we do a bond issue, we make an agreement to provide investors with a lot of different information on an annual basis. And so for the life of that bond issue, we have to make sure that we're providing that information to investors, so they can make the best decisions for themselves about whether or not to divest themselves of our debt or to continue purchasing our debt. And then there's many other requirements in the different various bond documents and ordinances and indentures. And these can be anything from reporting requirements to covenants to maintain certain levels of revenue, et cetera, et cetera. So they're just all things that we have to monitor. We have to be proactive to make sure that the city continues to have a good name in the investment community and able to sell bonds at a low rate. Also, finally, there's a provision in the debt policy to do an annual report. And while the council approves all of the debt issues of the various trusts, and you all see these things, we just thought it would be a good idea that annually, we have a consolidated report to provide to you that shows you kind of the cumulative effect of all these decisions. And this information is already in all of our financial reports. But, you know, you've seen those financial reports, the very thick documents. So this is trying to give just an annual consolidated report about the state of the debt portfolio of the city and its trusts. So, again, there's a lot of topics in there. That was just a high-level overview, and this was a collaborative effort with our legal counsel, our bond counsel, our financial advisor, and staff from some of the various trusts who issue debt. And the thought is that upon council adopting this policy, each of the individual trusts would have to consider the same policy and bring it before their board as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions for Kenny?
Yeah, Larry?
I'd just like to make a comment, a personal comment. I really appreciate what you've done here, and I think it's excellent. I really like, in general policies, item B, pay-as-you-go funding of capital outlays. And I believe that's one of the secrets of the success of the MAPS projects. We don't go out and borrow on those MAPS projects. We pay for it until we have the money in hand, and it's been a very successful thing since implemented back in the early 1990s. But thank you for your effort here.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's real refreshing to be part of a city that takes debt extremely seriously. You know, we're the city that we have needs, and we could always borrow and borrow and borrow to meet those needs. But the needs aren't really going to go away. We're always going to need more, and it's very good to see how we look 50 years down the road when it comes to financial management, because the finances of any organization is extremely important to keep under control. And so it's real refreshing.
We appreciate the rating, and that bond rating only validates your success. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Thank you for your leadership.
How about a motion on item 9E? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
All right. How about a motion?
Set.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order?
Move the strike.
Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 9H, I understand we do need executive session to get an update on our labor negotiations?
That's correct.
Okay. Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 10 is Claims Recommended for Approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under either of the items listed under Claims Recommended for Approval? All right. How about a motion?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. That moves us on to items from council. James, you have anything for us today?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, we have, I guess, a couple of items to take care of before we do the kind of the round the horn. The first is approving travel expenses to the National League of Cities. Is there a motion there?
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. That item passes unanimously. And Ed, do you want to introduce item 9B?
Well, this is really just a continuation of the discussion that we have adjacent fair brush of last week on transit. And we can tweak the wording. I'm not sure about the wording here. We put it together rather quickly. But really, the idea is just to refer back to the MAPS sidewalk committee for study of this idea. There's really two areas that we're building sidewalks. One is with the general obligation bonds, which we've talked about today. When we widen streets, resurface, we're putting in sidewalks on at least one side of the street. The Bond Advisory Committee has studied this issue, and they've determined that if there's monies left over, you can use bond money on these street projects for street furniture, which would include bus shelters. And so they're looking at working with Public Works and Transit working together to try and figure out where Public Works is going to be working on streets where we have major transit lines, and trying to capture efficiencies. If you're going to have crews out there putting down sidewalks, you might as well incorporate the concrete pad. Even if you don't put the bus shelter in today, you'll at least have that done now. And as we go through the years, maybe a regional transit authority's created, maybe there's an expansion, and more money's available in the future, at least you would have done this all now. So I believe Public Works and Transit is working on the bond sidewalks. This is really trying to mirror some of those efforts with the MAPS sidewalks. And I have no idea how many of the MAPS sidewalks are on major transit lines or which ones would be amenable. So I want to make sure that we're not talking about requiring concrete pads on all MAPS3 sidewalks, only where the Transit Department and the Sidewalk Committee would agree that this is unlikely to change, and there's a high rate of people getting on and off. And Jason, if you, or Eric, if you want to speak to that. But this is really just referring it to the MAPS3 sidewalk for study, where I don't know how many. Are we talking about three? Are we talking about 30? I don't know the cost. I'm just asking for them to look at this now, because it would be a shame to go ahead and put in all of these $9 million worth of sidewalks and then wish, or have to come in later and put in concrete pads.
If I can make a couple of comments on that.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, we want to tie in shelters with all of our sidewalk improvements. And we are doing on the GOs. We have done, we've tied in sidewalks with MAPS3. I've got some pictures. If you want to see where we have tied them in as we go by. I think the question is for future shelters as they go down. And I think you're aware that we have two methods for putting future shelters in. One are some that are funded by COTPA, and then we have another that are funded by a third party, and that third party, as part of their cost, has that foundation as a part of that. So as we go forward, and we put the foundation in, then we're going to have to go back, which is fine. We can do that. But we're going to have to go back and renegotiate with that third party, because we're actually paying them to put in that foundation and tie it into the sidewalks. So we'll have to go back as a part of that and reevaluate that third-party agreement as we go forward.
And that may be something that the subcommittee talks about and has a recommendation.
The pads are about $3,000 apiece, just as a point of reference.
Right. It's about 10 feet, 10 feet in diameter.
Yeah, actually, if we tie a pad for a shelter in with a sidewalk, because the sidewalk, you know, provides frontage and access, then the size of the pad is actually more like 6 by 8 to 5 by 8, again, when we have a sidewalk running in front of the shelter.
So is there anything in the sidewalk master plan that I, I mean, have we looked at the sidewalk master plan and identified where our transit lines overlap with?
David, do you want?
Councilman, yes, I have looked at that, and we have nine alignments that we've already constructed sidewalks on that had bus routes. We have six that are under construction, and we have 10 that we anticipate will be in future construction. So that's a total of 25.
Okay.
And is the thought that we would use MAPS money to build the pads at the same time as the sidewalks?
Yes. Potentially. I mean, I don't know what the cost is, but potentially, right now, we're running in ahead of revenue projections. So if, in the next couple of years, this will wrap up in 2017, if we're ahead of projections, then that's a potential area to spend the excess revenues.
But just to clarify what I think I just heard, the provider of the bus shelter would pay for that otherwise?
That is correct.
Correct. Okay.
Or potentially, the private developer could work with, MAPS3 pays for the sidewalks, and they pay for the concrete pad. I mean, however that was negotiated or worked out. It's just trying to do it now to capture efficiencies rather than coming in later.
And we would be open to working with that third party, again, if we had to, as Mr. Couch had mentioned, kind of renegotiate that, where is there another option for if the concrete pad is in place, then what's the deal with still putting a shelter up?
So can you talk for a second about where we are with the GO bonds and this process? The Bond Advisory Committee and?
Well, okay.
So following the Bond Advisory, actually making the recommendation to council, and council adopting the resolution to include in all 2007 bond projects, it's actually not just widening. We'd also include it on residential, if perhaps there was a residential that was on a bus route, you know, as well. So any bond sidewalk construction would be inclusive. And so we've actually worked out a new procedure, where before the project begins and as the engineer is hired, we're meeting with Transit very early to look at that bus route and to make those decisions. So, one, to determine if it's on a bus route, and then, two, to make sure that routes are eligible, knowing that there's different ways to construct them. So once we make that determination, we're just including them as a part of our bidding packages and constructing them. It's only been in place for about a year, so we only have one project thus far that was a new project. It's 20, it's 10th Street, 10th or 23rd?
23rd Street.
23rd Street, that we've just started in the last month. But you can expect some additional stops and shelters on that as a part of bond construction, and then all future construction as well.
So what's the process of deciding whether to incorporate the concrete pads or not?
They're incorporated on all bond projects. If it's on a bus route, the Transit needs to stop constructing.
So you're doing it on all of them?
On all that are agreed by Transit that need to be constructed.
Okay.
Right.
So this would be asking the subcommittee to mirror that policy, mirror the bond policy on the MAPS3 sidewalks?
All right. Is that the motion? Is there a second? All right.
This is an opportunity to make a comment. Ed, I like your idea. I'm just concerned as to whether a resolution at this time is the appropriate thing. I think you said in your presentation that should funds be available at the conclusion of the MAPS project, then those surplus funds would be used for this. But yet, the wording on our agenda says to require the construction of pads. I just think, as we've heard right now, the city staff is attempting to put in these pads, you know, in every situation they feel like it's appropriate. I just, I don't want to take a lead from our federal government and enacting ordinances or resolutions that we don't quite understand. And that's the way I feel. I just don't know enough about this to say that I'm in agreement that we require something, yet we're saying only if surplus funds exist.
And I'll say, David, that that word "require" bothered me as well. I mean, I'm really just asking that it go to the subcommittee for study, and then they make a recommendation to us.
Oh, I'm 100% for further looking into this, because I think it's a valid concern, you know, these shelters. And to the extent we have funds, what I'm a little bit concerned about, though, how do we determine, and I'm probably leaning towards bus shelters, but how do we determine that it's a better use of limited funds to build, to put in the pad versus extending a sidewalk a little bit further if we had surplus funds? And I think that's going to come down to the final decision. Do we use the surplus funds to extend sidewalks, you know, in greater length, or do we take that surplus and put it towards the shelters? Being a regular user of the bus system, I'm in favor of enhancing the bus shelters, because I certainly understand the need for that. So if we could reword this a little bit to say we are recommending that the subcommittee evaluate that, then I'm all for that. I just am concerned with the word "to require the construction of concrete pads."
So I would like to amend it to read that we refer to this to the MAPS3 Subcommittee for study and recommendation.
I'd second that.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. First, we're going to vote on the amendment, then. So motion is on the amendment, and David, your second's on the amendment?
Yes.
All right. All right. Everybody going on the amendment? Cast your votes. And it passes 7-2. All right. Now we have a motion on the?
And so this motion does nothing but refer to the, so whether, I guess, I'm?
It does just refer it, but it seems to imply to me that the council's for it. We haven't said anything to a subcommittee before that we weren't for. So, I mean, I think that's an important distinction. If I'm on a subcommittee, I would think that the council's for it if they sent it to us to look at.
In my mind, I see this saying something else also. Previously, we had placed a tremendous emphasis on the importance of sidewalks under the MAPS3 initiative. And we got some extra money for sidewalks, because we didn't have as many miles of sidewalks that we had thought we could get because of some construction and costing estimate situations. I see this as saying, well, yeah, we were really excited about sidewalks, but now we're excited about sidewalks and bus pads. And I don't see them going together, and that's why I'm opposed to it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second on your resolution? All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. And the motion fails 4-5. All right. Ed, anything else? Okay. Larry? Pete? David?
Yes, Your Honor. I don't know if it's appropriate or not to mention this, but, you know, I registered for reelection last week and did not receive an opponent. And all I wanted to say is, that doesn't necessarily mean that people have always, from Ward 5, agreed with the way I voted. I recognize that, and I encourage that we still have a lot of, that the citizens of Ward 5 and throughout the city of Oklahoma City stay engaged and provide as much input as possible. I think we get better decisions with more input, both positive and negative, and especially when opinions are submitted with explanations. I think it creates a very healthy environment for our decision-making process. And, secondly, I wanted to point out that the number of times that I'm 100% for or 100% against a vote is small. It's not the majority, I'd say. Often, I may be for or against something 60 to 70% in my mind, and sometimes it may be as little as a 51 to 55% in favor or against. So when I do vote for or against something, and somebody may have a different opinion, our opinions may be closer than what people may think. It's just that I have the benefit of perhaps...
of, of perhaps more information than others do. So, all I'm trying to say is, we need your engagement, the citizens of Oklahoma City, we need to continue to receive your input, again, both positively and negatively. And speaking of that, we had a young man speak to us last week about finding ways for citizens to become more engaged, more involved in city activities, and I would hope that our media group, public relations group, will take that in consideration, and I'm not sure how we accomplish that, but if there is some way, such as through social media, such as, I'm going to use an example, Facebook, that has sections on the various committees that citizens can become involved with, or trust boards, that we highlight that, identify, you know, how often they meet, what's the requirement of those members, and provide as much information to the public as possible about those opportunities for citizens to become more involved, more engaged. I like Councilwoman Salyer's recommendation of becoming, getting involved with leadership Oklahoma City, but that's a rather robust and very involved commitment, and for those individuals who don't have that opportunity or time to do that, maybe the ci, the city could supplement that with some additional information through our various social media.
I think we do some of that, but we'd be happy to look at it and see if we can do it more robustly.
Thank you.
David, just a couple of follow-ons on that. There is a guide to city government, it's a, actually, very thick pamphlet, I've got some in my office right now. It lists every single board and commission that exists in the city, and all of the requirements that one would need. Some of them have residence requirements, some of them have specific, you know, educational requirements, whatever, but that exists, and I, we're going to work to put it online, but anybody could come pick up one of those books to take a look at it. And a little sneak preview, our friends at A Better Block have been working on this issue as well, and they're going to host an event on Valentine's Day, February 14th, at Elemental Coffee. I don't have all the details yet on timing, but it's going to be called Love Your City, and the goal here is to ask folks to come down and get engaged, apply to serve on boards and commissions, and help us do things like increase diversity and really open the doors to some of this young new leadership group. Mayor, you did such a good job on Flashpoint on Sunday, talking about the interest folks have in being engaged with our city processes, and this is a great way to do it. So, more to come on Love Your, hashtag Love Your City, but I think it's a really great idea.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to personally thank the new superintendent of Oklahoma City Public Schools. I believe that he is trying to do the best as possible to move the school district forward, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Pat?
Your Honor, thank you, I just have a, a question. This morning, we approved, and I think it's a good idea, a fuels management system for the fire department, with an annual cost, or with the initial cost, anyway, $300,000. And I was curious if the, the commissions, the groups that we put together to study these things, took into consideration the maintenance of that system as, after we put it in? You know, is this a sole source provider, or can we go ahead with our own people and make changes to the system?
Councilman, I'll have to get back to you on that. I, I believe they have, but I, because we always do, but, but I, I can't answer that, I'm just...
But it seems like that would be an important thing, consideration in selection, selecting a supplier.
Sure was.
If we had the opportunity or the ability to go back and make changes ourselves.
But I'll, I'll follow up on that and back with you.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
All right. City manager reports.
We have a presentation this morning on the, on the intermodal transit hub, Eric Weiner is here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present to you the, an update on the Oklahoma City Intermodal Transit Hub. There's been a lot of discussion on this project in the past several months, and we've recently updated the MAPS three transit subcommittee, so, knowing that we're moving very quickly, and as you'll see from the schedule that I'll show you later in this, in this presentation, you'll see that there's a lot of great things to come in, in 2015. As a part of just the outline, we're going to go over a little bit of the background and history, some site plans, the funding and cost estimate, and then I'll wrap up with the schedule. So, for those that may not have known, a lot of the rich history of the project, it's not just a remodel of, of the Santa Fe, it's an expansion of the existing Santa Fe station, it's a historic rehabilitation, there's some upgrades. Today, we have Amtrak service, but there are not Amtrak offices, and so, this will actually include Amtrak offices. There's also future retail, but it takes into account, of course, the new vision of Oklahoma City to become more intermodal or multimodal. So, as we talk about things with MAPS three and the new streetcar, and we talk about the inclusion of that on EK Gaylord Boulevard, other opportunities that may include future commuter rail, high-speed rail, just those visions as we look forward, but also the connectivity for the pedestrian, also the downtown-to-bricktown connection is a huge part of this project. One of the slides I'll show you is that connection that's being proposed to tunnel the rest of the way through the elevated railroad, to make that connection all the way through the system. One of the, the things that we were blessed with, with hiring the consultant, Tap Architectures, they did a history of the Santa Fe station, and these are some of the older photographs that they started to, to pull out of the archives, and you can see some of the early construction photos of the Santa Fe. When we look at this, this isn't the first Santa Fe station. The original Santa Fe station was built in 1904, it actually remained in use through the 20s and the 30s, but the elevated railroad tracks that we have gotten very familiar with, those weren't built until 1930, it was a separate project, but since that time, there were several renovations to the original station, changes in freight and passenger services. But the most recent station, the Santa Fe as we see it today, was actually constructed in 1934, and it was in response to those elevated tracks. The previous station was not served well when those were put into the air. It was at a cost of $500,000, and, and the architect was E.A. Harrison. Obviously, it's had a multitude of uses, and so, as we look into the future, it's time to, again, update and renovate Santa Fe. So, to assist us, MAPS three project obviously included renovations to the building with a budgeted amount of about $10 million. We have Project 180 improvements, but to supplement those funding sources, we actually applied for a Tiger grant in 2013, and as most of you already know, that was accepted in August of 2014. So, we are actually in grant status now, we're starting to submit quarterly reports, we're starting to submit those first applications for reimbursement, since we actually have an architect onboard and actively doing design. And so, what we have today is, the architect has actually finished the first round of information, which includes this programming report, and you'll see that it's, it's pretty extensive, it includes some of the, the history, it includes the inclusion of the Project 180 projects, it includes the MAPS three work that's underway, and it also includes about a 30% construction set of plans that we're starting to review, and that includes site plans, some of the layouts, and then, of course, it has started to validate the budget and the overall schedule. This is a site plan, and if we look at this, north is to your right, so, as you see the Santa Fe at the top of the page, the white space that you see in the middle is actually the elevated tracks, and at the bottom, you have Bricktown. So, some of the site features that you see is, they're starting to look at integrating the Santa Fe completely with the future planned improvements on EK Gaylord, to make sure that that seamlessly integrates pedestrian and also vehicle, meaning, you can see some of the new parking areas that are being proposed, you can see some of the new retail, which includes Retail Plaza, multi-use Arrival Court, some additional spaces to the north, but you can see as a part of the grant, we're able to actually look to the east, and we can also look at a Bricktown Canal connection, finishing that tunnel, what you see in that tan right through the middle of the drawing, and it's labeled Bricktown Connection. So, that is what the grant has been able to provide, is really enhancing that original vision of just remodeling the building and making it intermodal. Looking just at that Bricktown Canal connection, these are some of the other areas, it's going to be a challenge, there's an upper level to the canal, and there's a lower level, and we're going to need to make sure that that's ADA accessible. In this early planning stage, we've identified those needs, and so, what we'll find in the final plans is the solutions to make that happen. We're also working very closely with BNSF, there is not an approval today to actually make that cut through the railroad tracks. It's going to be a very complicated engineering solution, there's active rail today, and so, we'll actually be building a shoe fly, a bypass, for those trains to, to move, so that we can actually do work. The railroad will not allow us to work under active tracks, so, half of the tunnel will be constructed at once, and, and there's a lot of logistics that are going to have to be addressed. This is the rendering, if you were standing on the southeast corner of the Cox Convention Center, looking back to the northeast, you can see some of the vision, you can see the expanded plaza, one of the goals of the project, and again, these are just some of the conceptual drawings, is that we're hopefully going to have the opportunity to move the east curb line of EK Gaylord west. Expanding that area then, in front of that historic front entrance that you can see, and widening that, making it more accessible, more friendly, ADA improvements. Today, if you were to go out there, you'll find that it's actually about four feet wide from that bottom step to the back of curb, it's very narrow. So, those are one of the big features. You can see some of the areas where we're going to have some opportunity for some on-street parking and some drop-off areas. We have not determined exactly what that final layout will look like, but we're also starting to plan, as you can kind of see in the upper left-hand portion of the drawing, integrating the MAPS three streetcar. You can see a, a proposed streetcar in the blue color, coming down the street on the west side of Gaylord. This is a, on-the-ground rendering, looking back towards the station, just to kind of show someone those widened plaza areas, again, trying to create an expanse, and as we start talking about the multi-modal aspect, not just bus, not just streetcar, but also integrating bicycle, pedestrian, and some of the other modes. This is the vision of what we're hoping to be able to accomplish on that Bricktown connection, and so, this is looking at the waterfall section, it's on the east side of the tracks, you can see that split level arrangement, you can see the stairs that are there. Obviously, again, one of the challenges will be making sure that that's ADA accessible, but in that upper left-hand portion, you can see the, the early concept of actually completing that tunnel, and that tunnel would actually take you right into the Santa Fe station, right on the west side of the track. So, yes, we do have pedestrian access on Reno and Sheridan, there are lots of folks that park in Bricktown or park in downtown and go back and forth on those street avenues, but this would be a pedestrian-only connection, that, again, we're still working with BNSF that we hope to provide as a part of the project. So, as we look at the interiors, and I mentioned a lot of the opportunities to expand and to do something different with the Santa Fe, you know, we're starting to look at space, I mentioned Amtrak, but there's some additional layouts and some additional opportunities that are being suggested by the architect at this point. As we zoom in to this next slide, you can see on the blue spaces, this is what's being proposed for the Amtrak offices and the Amtrak connection to the Heartland Flyer. If you've ridden the Heartland, you actually know that you walk up some stairs, and you come up in the middle of the platform, and that's what's shown in that blue area, it also shows the connecting of that Bricktown entry. But we have the opportunity to include a café, a newsstand, and also, you can start to see some additional waiting spaces on this half of the drawing. When we look at the southern part of the drawing, you can see there's opportunities for offices, and then you've, of course, got the retail opportunity on the far bottom side of this drawing, that's where Pinketzel is now, the cupcake and candy shop that's there, and so, I think there's some opportunities to not just include function like that, but actually expand some additional opportunities at the Santa Fe as well. These are some of the interior renderings, it's obviously a very historic building, an Art Deco design, and so, a lot of that is being, you know, maintained and preserved, so, the history of the building is very much a part of the project. We anticipate additional renderings to be able to show as the architect proceeds and did the final design. This is a summary of all the funds that have been identified for the project, and this is what's included in our grant application, and so, you'll see that as a, as a $28.5 million project, 13.5 of that comes from those Tiger funds that we received last year. We've got about 11.3 in non-federal funding, which is from the city of Oklahoma City, that's Project 180, that's also the MAPS three funds, but we also have some matching funds from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, about $1 million and a half, and then we also have ACOG, Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, that's participating with $2 million. And then, this is how those costs break down, as we look at the different functions of the facility, and, and as you look at the left side of that drawing, you'll see that some of those are being budgeted for Amtrak, you're going to see some of those for the plaza, you're going to see some of those for EK Gaylord. When it comes down to the actual completion of the project, yes, we do have to account for the funds, but one of the things is actually making sure that we've got enough budget to complete each of the major parts of the project. So, looking forward into 2015, we are on a fast track, the architect is proceeding ahead, we're having coordination meetings with the MAPS consultants, and we're having coordination meetings with the Project 180 consultants. In a lot of cases, some of those same consultants, like Jacobs Engineering, is working on some of the same teams, and so, I come to you today to assure you that we've got cooperation and coordination, even though these are going to be separate projects. But as you look at the bottom left-hand side, you'll see 2015 and 2016 on that scale, and you'll see that we're going to be completing final plans on or around April. So, this spring, we're going to have those drawings that'll be coming to you, the city council, for consideration of approval and bidding. Bidding here, hopefully, in the, in the actual June timeframe, we could expect to see construction start as early as this summer. But I mentioned some different projects, you've got the building projects, you have Project 180 projects, some of the site work and the tunneling work may be actually a different package, it may be a, a different contractor that we would like to select on a project of, of a specialty nature. But again, as we look to the end of the, of the timeline, you're going to see that we're looking for a late 2016 substantial completion. So, two years from now, we're hoping to, to open the Oklahoma City Intermodal Transit Hub with the features and the things that I've shown you today. But with that, we're, we're moving ahead, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Ed? So, there's 12 million budgeted for property acquisition, could you use some of that 12 million for purchase of the railroad spur?
I don't know that, I, so, the answer is, I do not believe so. The grant as approved and the funding, if we go back a slightly, Shannon, one more. The funding that you see that is here was specific to the grant and completing the projects that, that I've shown you today. I don't believe we can add to that at this point, but we've got to complete the project as described to be eligible to receive the rest of those grant funds.
But if we complete the project, and there's funds left over, we can go back and look at that.
And, and, so, you could apply some leftover funds to purchase of the spur?
We would certainly pursue that.
We can definitely look at that. I will tell you that we're still getting some cost estimates, so I come to you with being a little bit conservative and not knowing what, what we're really going to fully expect with some of the specialty construction. You know, that tunnel is very special, and, and as we look at ODOT and, and the work that they're doing with the Boulevard, and as they've recently awarded some work to cut their tunnel through, through the railroad, we're looking at those costs and some things and trying to, to the best of our ability, manage our funds.
I mean, one, one concern is that in a couple of years, we would open a transit hub, but there's no transit connected to it. I mean, our buses, interstate buses are being dropped off on MLK and Reno, there's no integration of the buses, the streetcar doesn't get quite to the transit hub, and we're not going to have the spur that would allow, like, rail service to Tulsa or...
So, everything that has been discussed, either through ACOG or, or through the fixed guideway study, we have preserved all of those options with this design, and so, I'll go back, and, and as, as part of the streetcar, we will be building streetcar, MAPS three streetcar track in EK Gaylord as a part of this project.
And, and there are bus stops on both the north side and the south side, both on Reno and Sheridan, there are stops adjacent to it for the Monarch Street.
And should additional stops, say, be suggested on EK Gaylord? We're easy to accommodate that, which is what we want to show in drawings like this, that we're providing laybys and pull-out lanes, whether that be a bus, whether that be a vehicle, whether that be something else that we've not thought of, that at least from a site planning perspective, we can accommodate change in the future. So, for example, when I mentioned the shoe fly construction up on the elevated track, one thing that we got into the railroad as a part of the discussion was, you know, after the shoe fly is complete, you would normally remove those rails, because they're no longer needed. We will actually be leaving those temporary rails, making them permanent in place for the future commuter rail potentially to Norman, potentially to Edmund, potentially for that high-speed connector rail, and not actually lift that rail back out. The platform is wide enough, or the elevated track is wide enough, and is being designed to accommodate all of those uses now, and some of the construction dollars we're putting in will actually be preserved and, and used hopefully in the future by those projects when they're identified.
And so, Eric, you might comment that you've, we've kind of gotten agreement already from BNSF on what those separations need to be, and we know we've got enough track to be able to do that, which is why being able to leave that shoe fly is so incredibly important to what happens in the future.
It's all happening simultaneously, it's also being coordinated with ODOT's work to the south as a part of the Boulevard, we're making the same alignments, so, I mean, again, I can bring to you all the assurances that we're keeping all of the future possibilities open, so that they can be easily connected to, and that we've not limited anything.
But didn't the transit study recommend, I mean, the, the U-Haul site, we were, at one point, we were going to put buses in, or bus stalls on that site, is that incorporated into this, or...
I don't, in this project, the answer is no, but I'm not, and I don't know the site plan that you're speaking from. What I will share is that when Jacobs did the original master plan for the Santa Fe Intermodal Transit Hub, you recall that it had phases. Originally, the phase one portion of the study was really geared towards what that original MAPS three improvement was, was a $10 million project. The ultimate master plan, the 25 to 50-year plan, suggested it was a $100 million project that had all sorts of amenities to be constructed as funds became available. We obviously can't complete the $100 million plan, but at $28.5 million, we're going to be able to do something in the middle between that phase one and that phase two, and that's exactly what we're doing. We're taking extra steps to do new things, but that may, and some of those other suggestions that you're speaking of, may be in that ultimate master plan, that, that, no, we are not completing.
There's nothing in this level where buses would be able to come in and connect to this transit hub. We'll... transit hub. We'll leave them at this point for the foreseeable future on MLK and Reno.
So city buses will have stops, and should we actually be able to coordinate with Greyhound Bus Service, I think we could easily accommodate a stop for Greyhound here, too. That's the, the design of this is to be multimodal, so if that needed to take place, we could make that happen.
Is it, is it part of this plan?
Currently, it is not a part of the programming, but again, it can always be adapted. If that's a change that comes, whether that's this year, or two years, or five years from now, this, we'll be able to adapt to those changes, yes.
Any other questions for Eric?
Can I just make a comment? Eric, when you started your presentation, you've got some great photographs, and it just reminds me, we really do need to think in terms of having an Oklahoma City museum to capture the history of the city. I mean, it's, it's very impressive, and I don't mean just a little room with some pictures thrown together. If you go to the more modern museums, say in Washington DC or elsewhere, you have a combination of video and sound, and it's just a tremendous experience. We could accomplish the same thing. Now, I know the city can't be the one to take that lead, but perhaps we could at least have some available property that we could contribute to that process. So anyway, in the thoughts of trying to preserve the history of Oklahoma City, I'd like to keep that idea going, and we could draw from the history of our fire department, our police department, our military, our high schools, just a large variety of activities that have taken place. Thank you.
Pat?
Eric, you mentioned the big buses, Greyhound, Jefferson Company buses. You were, have you been in conversation with those people?
We have not. We have not.
Because during their presentation, when they moved to MLK, I thought that was sort of a temporary location, that they initially came back to the intermodal hubs, so they could be part of that system. But I think...
We were sure inviting them back. I mean, we were very clear with them, but at some point, you can't tell Greyhound how to run a bus station.
Not to take them into consideration at this point.
Yeah, and I think we'd all love to have Greyhound back down there, perhaps they want to.
We'd be pleased to make contact with them.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, they ought to be kept abreast of our plans.
We'd be happy to do so.
And hopefully, we can figure out a way to get them back. Any other comments for Eric? It's a very exciting project, Eric. Thanks for your patience with us. Okay, anything else from city manager reports?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Citizens to be heard, Joe Serge Nelson.
I'm Joe Serge Nelson. Excuse the glasses, I'm now going blind. I realize we're building some police department issues, which we long overdue, and they're all being upgraded and this and that, what have you, and I, above anybody else, are really glad to see that. I really am. But that's one of the reasons I'm here today, and the only reason I'm here, is about the police officers. Right here in Oklahoma City, you'll have to let me read this now. The past few weeks, we've had multiple stabbings, actually three of them, two shootings, one highway patrol trooper was involved in a shooting on Sunday, January 4th, 2015. We had at least 40 of our officers in Sheriff's Department tied up, looking for a little four-year-old boy over on the northeast side of town. For several hours, anyway, and it came to a great closure. And then yesterday, if all of you saw the news, we had two highway patrols out on Interstate 40, involved in an accident, and one lost his life. The police officers have been in the line of fire and on the firing line, as they are most, for the most part. They're always protecting the citizens and the children, the schools, our everyday worker, our property, our businesses. In fact, they're in total livelihood. There are several meetings like this that are held just to keep things on a level keel. Our police officers do the job very well. Nobody else really wants to do this job, and the same with our fire department. They take risk every day that others won't take, just to keep us safe and sound, and we expect it. What's a life worth when something really goes wrong? I often try to answer that one. Police and firefighters are needed. They are heavily trained, properly schooled to do the job that has to be done. Oklahoma City is no exception. I refer reverently to the past of officers' names that appear on the armed monument in front of the police headquarters. A few of them I knew personally. And what upsets me the most is when I'm here and hear somebody say, "Where is the police or fire when you need one?" And unfortunately, that's a simple question with a dynamite answer. We're so big now, and there are so few, but they're out doing their job, and there can't be two places at the same time. There was a recent incident that I was at December 18, 2014, at the Will Rogers Pavilion, and just a few weeks ago. As to why I was there or the place is not the issue. The matter for the, that's for another day. The police in the meeting began verbally to get out of hand. The police didn't possibly have gotten out of hand, but the major and his officers from the Hefner, Will Rogers, Motor Sickle, and other areas worked in the rain and the cold and did their job and did it well. Both side, inside and outside, was handled professionally and did quite a good job of trying to keep both sides in the meeting to bring it to a proper conclusion. And there were members of this city council and officials that were present at this meeting, and they saw exactly what I saw. The officers did their job and took the word ugly right out of the meeting. I do not say that it was their job, because I will have to agree, but it's your job up there, too. No one got hurt, no one got pushed around, and no one really got out of hand, all because these officers were there and doing their job. Remember that part. It was their job. That is why we need more. Oklahoma City's growing large and fast. Both police and fire are not. We need both to meet the needs of the growth. If we have all of these so-called funds on the city's plate, we have the funds to put officers on the streets to protect the people in this city and our investment. I hope you listen to me. I stuttered a lot a bit, but the bottom line is, it really is. We need our officers. We need them badly. I see things every day that I really wished I didn't see. I even get upset some of it. I have officers that work, my family, that are training officers, that are relatives. We need these bad. I wish y'all would really consider looking at the streetcar and our hotel in that convention center again. We could always put them on hold to protect the city and our investment. We need the officers. We can't put that on hold. Our lives depended on it, our livelihoods depended on it. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I saw you out the Governor's Hill, and met your wife and yourself. Congratulations on that. Y'all do a heck of a job, and most of the time, I'm up here griping and everything, and I'll probably gripe again if my health holds up. But I even saw Mr. Couch. Mr. Couch, you have a nice smile. You know that? I wish I could get Larry to smile. He finally broke a smile. That's the first time in four years I've seen him crack a smile at me. Y'all have a nice day.